First order of business tonight is, instead of the Pledge of Allegiance, is I'd just like to read a little bit about 9/11. Today, as we commemorate the 22nd anniversary of September 11th, 2001, terrorist attack on New York, Shanksville, Pennsylvania, and the Pentagon, it's time for remembrance, resolve, and renewal. We, the Select Board, citizens, and first responders of the town of Gostown, reverently recall those who were most directly affected by this tragedy, those who died, who were injured, or lost loved ones. Let us please have a moment of silence to reflect upon the actions of these heroes. Thank you, and this is something we will never forget. Would you all please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance at this time?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Call, should get your phone shut off?
That was the alarm reminding me I'm supposed to go to the board meeting.
Okay, first action tonight is the acceptance and correction of minutes on 8/28, public and non-public.
Move to accept the 8/28, 2023, public and non-public minutes with corrections if need be.
Second. Motion by Mark, seconded by Jim. Any discussion? Seeing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Standing? Motion passes. We have an announcement tonight. I'm sorry. The proclamation. Whereas the Constitution of the United States of America, the guardian of our liberties, embodies the principles of limited government and a republic dedicated to the rule by law. And whereas September 17th, 2023, marks the 236th anniversary of the framing of the Constitution of the United States of America by the Constitutional Convention. And whereas it is fitting and proper to accord official recognition to this magnificent document and its memorable anniversary and to the patriotic celebrations which we all commemorated with it with. Now therefore, we, the Select Board of Town of Gostown, County Hillsborough, State of New Hampshire, by virtue and authority vested in us, do hereby proclaim September 17th through September 23rd, 2023, to be designated as U.S. Constitution Week throughout the Town of Gostown, New Hampshire, and ask our citizens to reaffirm the ideals that the framers of the Constitution had in 1787 by diligently protecting freedoms guaranteed to us through the guardians and of our liberties given in our hands and sealed this 11th day of September in the year of our Lord, 2023. And that will be signed by the Select Board. Do you want to bring up Public Works Director?
Sure. We're tab four in your packet.
So we got five minutes to public comment, so if I stop you in a minute.
All right. Okay, I think the first one in your packet is Henry Bridge Road Bridge Deck Project. So the reason for the request tonight is I'd like to fast-track a project that right now is slated for 2027 in the Capital Improvement Plan. We've got $175,000 planned for a replacement of the deck. That deck was a kit bridge, and it has a corrugated steel decking underneath the asphalt, and that sits on top of the structural steel members. The corrugated steel's starting to become corroded, and that's undermining the structural steel if we let that go too much longer. We have additional bridge aid funding, as you might remember. There's a typo in my memo. It should be SB, Senate Bill 401 from last year, and then it's House Bill 2 from this year, both those two bills. So SB 401 and HB 2 both provided additional bridge aid funds that have to go towards bridge maintenance or repair. The extra fund would make us, this would be a noticeable project, and we'd be able to order the materials needed now from the supplier of that bridge. U.S. Bridge is the company that designed those and sells those kits, so they could sell us, I think it's 81 or 82 panels that we'd need to replace the entire decking and any of the coping on the edges. And then we could go out to bid in 2024 to find a company to install them, to strip the existing deck and to install the new. And if the Board sees fit, we could take that right out of CIP before that's finalized. I think they go to the Plating Board this week for the CIP program. So that would reduce that by 175,000, and then we could make good use of these bridge aid funds. Right now, the only other major project that's sort of earmarked for those additional bridge aid funds would be the town portion of the Center Street Bridge. So we've got that 80/20 split with the state. We don't know the final cost yet until final design is done, but we could put all the rest of the funds, if we want, towards the town's portion of that.
When was that bridge last done?
The Henry Bridge Road Bridge? Let's see, I think construction... Did not bring the bridge report with me. I think we're coming up on 25 years, if I'm not mistaken. I think in '27 or '28 we'll be 25 years old. I think it was '01 or '02.
And is this the same material we're using that they used then?
It wouldn't.
I'll never see it, but some 25 years from now, they'd be doing it again?
It looks like it. There may be, we might be able to get on a better cycle with overlays. I think knowing what we know now, it's kind of a bridge that's made to be used all over the country. But some of the members drain, which we found on the abutment side. It wasn't really set up for snowmelt. We might be able to extend the life by milling and resurfacing a little more often than we have for the first part of its life. But it's one of those things we don't know until you try it.
We had a problem last time with the joints. I don't know if you were around for that.
I was not, no. It was part of the beginning here. They sent the wrong, I heard with the kit, they sent the wrong joints.
Actually bent the arms on the loader, so just want to make sure that we don't go that direction again.
Whatever those were, don't order those again, right? Yeah, I think they initially sent the wrong ones. For a while, we had the old set hanging around, and we decided it was worthless to keep them on hand and scrap.
Any questions?
When you're looking to install?
So we'd like to purchase now, place the order now, so it's a couple of months lead time, so then we'd have the materials on hand and ready. Do it sometime in 2024. Like to go out to bid probably in the spring, late winter, early spring, see who we can get on board for the project, and then kind of work with their timeline. But it'd be something we'd want to do when school's out.
So it'd be in the summer?
Hopefully.
Sometime in June.
Ideal situation. And sorry, if I didn't mention it, the major request tonight is that because of the kit bridge, it's a sole source purchase because it's the same manufacturer. So it'd be a request to waive the purchasing policy.
Is that the only company that really does this stuff?
This is their product, their bridge design. I'm sure we could probably find a corgish metal supplier, but where it's a pre-engineered bridge, I think we'd probably have to get a whole new set of engineering drawings. So any money we'd save on steel would probably be lost to engineering. And it makes sense, because they'll have everything pre-measured, pre-cut, and ship us everything ready to go.
Anybody else?
So we've got two recommendations here, Peter. I think we should address them individually. So I'll make a motion to recommend an approved sole source purchase of bridge deck panels from U.S. Bridge of Cambridge, Ohio, as presented.
Second. Motion by Call, seconded by Jim. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Standing? Motion passes.
Further, I make a recommendation, a motion to recommend removal of the Henry Bridge Road Deck Project from the 2027 CIP matrix and direct DPW to perform the work in 2024 with HB 401 bridge maintenance funds.
Second. Motion by Call, seconded by Mark. Any discussion on that one? Seeing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Standing? Motion passes. And I'm going to call, if you want to just stand there for a second. Is there anybody here for public comment? Seeing none? We'll close public comment, and you can continue on.
Okay. Second item is a revisit. Sorry, I wasn't able to speak to this one last time I was here. Just as a refresher, we have a purchase of a sidewalk machine, sidewalk tractor in the 2024, proposed CIP for the 2024 budget. We've intended to purchase that using the Houston-Galluston Area Cooperative Purchasing Agreement to get the best pricing that we could. The local vendor for that contract is HP Fairfield. In calling them for an accurate budget number, they said, "Well, we have access to a couple of machines. If you're interested in taking delivery of this in the fall, we'll let you have it for an extended demo period, and you can buy it after Town Meeting in March." Sounds amazing. Obviously, nobody wants to do this at risk. So the request at the last meeting was for the Board, if the Board's okay with that, to enter into such an agreement with the expectation that we'd be able to pay for it after the budget passes, both in the proposed budget and in the default budget. We should have enough in the highway vehicle default line to cover this purchase. I took the Board's willingness to enter that agreement back to HP Fairfield, and they do have some reservations with a municipal nonappropriation clause, which normally we'd have to have if it's something that's going to bridge fiscal years. So I'm not going to die on the hill, but I thought maybe try to get creative and see if there's a way that we could lend some assurances without such a clause. We do have a few different avenues we could go. Even in the default scenario, I know that just because the default line for an equipment is enough doesn't mean we wouldn't have to pepper that around to make all the numbers work elsewhere. We do have the aforementioned SB 401 highway funds, which can be used for maintenance equipment. We also would have access to the HB 2 funds when they arrive. They haven't, as far as I know anyway, as of last week, haven't hit town's revenue yet, but those are anticipated soon. That's another $120,000. We do have some road impact fees. I think it's about $60,000. So I think there's different ways to make that happen, even if we're in a default scenario. But certainly not to me, and I didn't want to put us in a bad spot if worst-case scenario happens and we are in default. I don't want to sign us up for something that is going to be an absolute no this time in the spring. The benefits of having it this winter, certainly we can get a lot more bang for the buck from one, even just one sidewalk operator, and one of these machines can probably get both, right now, both sidewalk routes done in about the same or less time. They go that much faster. Plus, we can treat the sidewalks at the same time, which we don't have that ability now. So sometimes we get into a case where back-to-back storms, we haven't even finished plowing, let alone treated the sidewalks, and then the next storm comes, and it turns into that multi-layer of ice and all that. So I think there's some definite benefit, both for the department and for the residents, certainly, of the sidewalked areas. But I don't know. Without having that clause in there, I'm not sure how the Board feels about trying to give some assurances of other payment avenues.
This is a replacement?
The old Bondeer tracked machine is the one that's going, yeah.
Derek, what's your take on this?
I think Adam has pointed out that under a default budget scenario, typically, the department heads would advise the Select Board on how to maneuver available funds. But with the additional highway funds and impact fee funds, I feel very confident that we'd be able to pay for it if the Board were okay with using it over the winter.
The only scenario, I'm going to shoot my own argument here, probably, but the only scenario that would put us in a bad spot is if at deliberative sessions...
The budget gets...
Either by petition or at the meeting, somebody votes to pull that one particular item into a special article. Then the special article makes it to the ballot, and it fails. Then no means no. If the Board would be open to such an, if we're even open to the idea at all, if we were to get in that situation, one thing we could do is use the funds that we talked about to just complete the purchase prior to budget, and then it's a moot point.
And what was the price?
$200...
$249?
With all the attachments, $226, 744. That's the Houston-Galluston pricing.
Make a motion that we have Adam move forward with the purchase of the sidewalk tractor.
Second. Okay, we've got a motion by Mark and seconded by Jim. Let me just re... Go ahead.
Yeah, so I think Adam is asking for a, to try it out this winter with a purchase in 2024.
No caveats, and budget passing.
Right, right. Knowing what we just discussed would have to transpire, worst-case scenario.
Realizing that you may have to cut something else out to get through that.
To make it work, yeah.
Quarter of a million-dollar piece of equipment.
Right.
Do we, excuse me, did we talk about insurance if something happens to it?
We'd have to have it picked up as an additional covered unit, which we do for rentals anyway, so they're pretty familiar with that process, yeah.
Okay, a motion by Mark, seconded by Jim. Any further discussion or questions? Seeing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Standing? Motion passes.
Okay, thank you. And maybe a second part I didn't even think about. Would you like me to, once we have it in hand, bring forward the bomber dear for municipal? See if we can sell it in the fall. We might be able to get a better price leading into winter than we would after, after March.
After March? Why don't you sell it now instead?
I think that's what he's asking, if we're able to get it in before winter comes.
Well, I thought that was part of the deal, they were going to break through and end for the winter.
It is, but I just wanted to make sure.
I know, they're auctioning their auction one next month, right?
They are, and we've already got a few going on to municipal. We have a few more planned, so I think either one would probably make out pretty well. I just didn't know if you want me to wait until the actual purchase had happened in spring, or do it...
Or if you get a commitment.
I think it makes sense to do it.
Fine.
You need a vote on that piece of it, Derek, or just have it come once it's in hand?
No.
All right, thank you very much.
Derek, you want to start?
Sure, I am on tab 6A. You have your committee meeting scheduled for the next two weeks. Tomorrow night at 6:00 PM, Sewer Commission.
I've got a problem.
Okay. Can somebody cover Sewer Commission?
Sure.
Okay.
We're here.
Yes, right here.
Right in this room. And at 6:00 PM, Budget Committee will be doing school facility tours of Bartlett and Maple Lab Elementary.
Right.
Wednesday, 9:00 AM, the Highway Safety Committee at the Police Department.
Yep.
And Thursday, 7:00 PM, Plating Board.
I have that.
Okay, thank you. Next week, Tuesday, 6:00 PM, Budget Committee will do school facility tours of Glen Lake School and Mountain View Middle School.
Yeah.
On Wednesday at 6:30, Library Board of Trustees have a meeting. Kelly did say that she didn't need someone to cover unless somebody was really interested and wanted to attend. And then at 7:00 PM, Parks and Rec Commission will be at Parks and Rec Center. On your next page, you have your consent agenda. You have employee status reports for a DPW truck driver, new hire. You have Parks and Rec Seasonal Ground Crew. This is an end-of-employment. Parks and Rec Seasonal Head Lifeguard, end-of-employment. You have 10 seasonal camp counselors and 10 seasonal lifeguards at Parks and Rec, all end-of-employment. You have an event permit for the Gostown Main Street Program for the 2023 Pumpkin Regatta, October 14th, from 9:00 to 4:00, and October 15th, 9:00 to 3:00, in the Gostown Village. On the employee status report, I'm sorry, I didn't mean, we added today resignation of a crossing guard. You have hazardous material, fuel, oil spill, release response plan prepared by the Fire Chief and Emergency Management Director for your review. And then this evening, we added the proclamation for Constitution Week.
Question? The DPW truck driver, new hire, is he licensed, or is he going on the plan?
It's going on the plan.
Okay, who tracks that?
DPW.
Okay, now who really going to track it, though?
Yes, that's me.
Motion?
Motion to approve the consensus agenda as presented this evening.
Second. Any discussion? Seeing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Standing? Motion passes.
At your next page, you have a report of timber cut and a timber tax warrant for the 2023 tax year, map 5, lot 49.
Motion to approve the assessor's recommendation as presented this evening.
Second. Motion by Mark, seconded by Jim. Any discussion? Seeing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Standing? Motion passes.
At tab 6D, you have the 2023 MS-1 Summary Inventory Evaluation. You have a cover memo from the assessor, and the assessor is here as well. There was an increase over the 2022 value of 54% to $2,706,202,200.
Any questions? Need a motion or accepted?
Yes, a motion to approve, and then I will just make sure that we get signatures tonight so we can submit to DRA.
Motion to approve the MS-1 Summary Inventory Evaluation Form.
Second. Okay, motion by Mark, seconded by Jim. Any discussion? Seeing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Standing? Motion passes.
At tab 6E, you have the proposed amendment to the ordinance prohibiting jumping off the Main Street Bridge. As you may require, or remember, at your last meeting, we made some modifications to the ordinance to change it to, decide it as the ordinance prohibiting swimming or jumping from bridges or structures. Sent that out to all members in your packet. You have both a clean copy and also a redline copy showing the proposed changes.
Any questions? Motion?
I move to adopt the ordinance prohibiting swimming or jumping from bridges or structures as presented, which will supersede the ordinance prohibiting jumping off the Main Street Bridge.
Can I just add this question right here?
Yes.
Shouldn't that say "town"? I mean, if somebody...
I think, so if you'd like to put that, if you'd like to put that into the title of it, we did put, "The restriction is into any public body of water within the Town of Gostown." But we did not make a distinction on ownership of the...
Structure.
The structure.
Well, that's what I'm saying, what determines the structure. If somebody has a dock or something like that, would that determine, is that a structure?
You could strike out or similar structure, because what we have under item 5 is, "No person shall jump from any bridge, bridge abutment, or similar structure." I would argue that dock is not a similar structure, but if you wanted to and felt better about it, you could strike out or similar structure. I know Jim pointed that out to me. I was a little bit vague on that language. So you could remove that, and still adopt it, would that change?
What do you think? Well, it's vague, and, you know, if there's any harm, somebody will jump off something, and police will get it. What's the chance of that? And then the press council will come in and say, "And what does, you know, what does that mean?" That it's vague, and they'll probably not get a $100 fine. That'll probably happen once in a great while, so I think it's a problem, but it's a very small problem, is what I think.
Yeah, I personally'd like to stay away from the whole dock issue. There's too many of them, it's too complex, and change all the time. State laws and regulations on docks are always changing. We'd never be able to keep up with it.
Well, that's what I'm saying, when we just say "structures", I want to make sure it doesn't include docks.
Right.
So you could change the title to "bridges or bridge abutments." Again, that's...
I'd feel more comfortable.
I prefer that. I prefer that personally. But we could say that similar structures shall not include...
Yeah, but you could go through a whole list.
Yes.
I like the wording that Derek gave us.
So you would change, you would change the title of the ordinance to "ordinance prohibiting swimming or jumping from bridges or bridge abutments." And then under item number 5, we would strike out "or similar structure," and we would get rid of the commas and add "and" between "bridge" and "bridge abutment."
Okay. Need a motion or not?
I move to adopt the ordinance prohibiting swimming or jumping from bridges or structures, as modified.
Okay.
As modified this evening, which will supersede the ordinance prohibiting jumping off the Main Street Bridge.
Second. Any of those discussion? Anybody good with it now?
Good with it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
At tab 6F, I'll have, I'll ask Danielle to come up and speak to this. This is for commodity rates for electricity, gas, diesel, and oil.
Good evening, everyone. So it's come to that time of year again where we have commodity rates that we need to lock in for our next-year budget season. At this point, we are coming up on electricity. I have for you here in the memo some updated figures from our current supplier. And the rates that I have in the memo have actually slightly changed from Friday's printing of the memo to today, so I do have an update there. We also have to discuss propane, gas, diesel, and oil. At this time, the market is changing so rapidly. The only one that we currently have locked in for this coming year is propane, and that's locked in through August 31st of '24 at a rate of $1.6905. So as with most of the commodities, they go out four decimals, but that's per gallon. So we could discuss with propane suppliers as well for going into next year's fall season, or we could address that next fall. Typically, they do extend out further. However, this year, we're not going to be joining with the school, because the school went out for their commodities through a, through a negotiated party. So they have a contract to deal with their commodities separately. So our allotments will be on the town's volumes only.
We couldn't get involved in that, or what happened?
I think back in April or May, we brought the concept of going out with a power and fuel broker. And we did meet with some and start the process, but we were so busy over the summer that we did not give them the necessary information to give us a more formal quote. So we're kind of at that point where we do need to lock these in as we prepare for next year's budget.
At this point, I would recommend a 12-month contract with our current supplier. That happens to be the same supplier that the school just locked in through their broker. But that would be at a rate of .1162 per kilowatt hour. Going up to 24 months, the rate actually gets worse. And if you go out to three years, 36 months, it's basically the exact same rate. So I think at this point, just locking in for a 12-month period would be the way to go for the electric. For gas and diesel, I don't have rates, same with oil. I can speak with the current supplier, who is also the state contract vendor at this point, to see if we can get rates. But the issue is the time that they provide the rates. They need the answer within 24 hours or less, and we haven't been able to get information in enough time to get to the meeting. So I was wondering if the Board would consider allowing me to negotiate those rates with either current state vendor or the best rate that we can find for a 12-month period to get us through this season. And then I'm hoping to come back to the Board with more information about a broker for future years.
So let's take the first one, which is the 12-month contract, standard power for electrical supply. That's the one that expires next year in August, right?
That's the one that expires this November.
November, okay. November, okay, I'm sorry. And that's the twelve-month one you're recommending?
Yes.
So let's just take that one for right now.
I'll make a motion to accept the twelve-month electric kilowatt, was it one point one one six you said?
Point one one six two.
One one six two, for a twelve-month period.
So you're authorizing the finance director to sign a twelve-month?
Correct.
Good question.
Go ahead.
The thirty-six month rate is pretty much the same as the twelve-month. Why wouldn't we do the lock-in? Do they fluctuate that much, or...?
Well, the, the real reason was, I can't foresee that far into the future, and I don't have the background in commodities that a broker would. The brokers can group us with other individuals. So I was thinking, if we're going to be potentially going with a broker at a future time, then maybe we would be getting a better rate on those out years. But if the board would prefer to go with that, it certainly is a very competitive rate. We could lock in, and then we would just, if we go with a broker, let them know that that contract is good through three years.
I'm going to suspend our discussion right now and go to our public hearing. It was scheduled at six-thirty. So I'm sorry, Danielle.
That's all.
So in compliance with RSA thirty-one colon ninety-five dash B, the Goffstown Select Board is conducting a public hearing to accept public input, to accept and expend unanticipated funds totaling three hundred and forty-nine thousand, eight hundred and forty dollars from the state of New Hampshire's Invest Demolition Grant Program. The grant funds are for demolition-related costs, including environmental abatement necessitated by the demolition related to multifamily residence, residential, the Residence at Hadley Falls Project, map thirty-four, lot one seventy-one. A vote for the select will be taken immediately after the public hearing, subject to a signed agreement with the developer that program funds are used for eligible demolition, and if the developer agrees to the municipal oversight of the demolition project to ensure compliance with the program's requirement. I'll open up the public hearing. Is there somebody here to speak to it? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. You want to take the vote now?
Yes, I would ask for you to.
Yeah. So I need a motion, which is printed there.
I will move to accept and expend unanticipated funds in accordance with New Hampshire RSA thirty-one colon ninety-five dash B totaling three hundred, forty-nine thousand, eight hundred, forty dollars from the state of New Hampshire's Invest New Hampshire Demolition Grant Program for demolition-related costs, including environmental abatement necessitated by the demolition related to the multifamily residential, the Residence at Hadley Falls Project, map thirty-four, lot one seventy-one, and to authorize the vice chair to sign the agreement between municipality and SMC Management Corporation for the administration of municipal demolition grant funding.
Okay.
Will it repeat that, Jim?
Just kidding.
I couldn't. Have a motion by Jim, seconded by Mark. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, standing, motion passes. We have another one?
There are tab five B.
Yeah. In compliance with RSA forty-one colon fourteen dash A, Goffstown Select Board is conducting this public hearing to accept public input pertaining to the town purchase vacant property off Mill Street, map thirty-four, lots one sixty-four A, owned by the Goffstown Rotary Park Charitable Truck. The Select Board has a second public hearing scheduled for Monday, September twenty-fifth at six-thirty. The Select Board shall vote to take place public hearing no sooner than ten-two, no later than ten-nine twenty-three. Our proposed purchase has been forwarded to the Gofftown Planning Board, Conservation Commission, for comment in accordance with RSA forty-one colon fourteen A. Any questions? I'll open the public hearing. Is there anybody here to speak to it? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing.
I think you have some people.
Huh? Oh, okay.
Yeah, do you want to go first, Jim?
No.
Good evening. Andrew Catterett, West Union Street, Goffstown, New Hampshire. And I wanted to thank the Select Board for moving this forward. This parcel is within, I believe, what the town already owns, the bridge abutment, and it really is a wise purchase, because it allows for future, whatever we want to do in the future in this parcel. And I, I think that it was a wise thing to do, and I appreciate it, and thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Good evening, board. Dave Pierce, an officer in, in the Friends of the Goffstown Rail Trail. I'm familiar with the parcel you're considering to purchase, and as for the previous speaker, I concur. The primary purpose for you purchasing it is to facilitate, if you ever need to build a pedestrian bridge from abutment to abutment. It would greatly facilitate that process, especially if there's a federal grant involved with helping to subsidize the funding. Secondly, I'm aware of the handout in your packet this evening, which has a sketch of the property from the town's GIS database. And as board member Colas Adams knows, we caution people at the planning board never to treat these boundary lines as authoritative. I would like to share a drawing with the board. This drawing is to provide the board a, perhaps a much more accurate diagram of the shape of the parcel you're considering to purchase. It technically doesn't extend all the way out to what we call as the edge of the pavement of Mill Street. And I just want to provide this for your, your understanding of the shape of the parcel.
Thank you. Anybody else? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. And again, this will be brought up at the September twenty-fifth at six-thirty for the public hearing, and then final on ten-two twenty-three. Is that it, Karen?
We can return. Yes, that's it for our public hearings. We can return to tab six F.
Continue on, Danielle.
Okay.
So I think we just said we're all set with the, did we do approve the electric?
There was a motion, I believe a second, but then a question on whether or not it would be worth going with the three.
Right, okay.
I don't have, I don't have a second yet.
No, okay. I have a motion by Select and May, but I didn't have a second either.
I'll second it. Okay. So your question was, are we better off going with the one? And I think Danielle said she's not a commodities broker, so she really didn't want to go out thirty-six months. Would that be accurate?
Yes.
Okay, all right. I'm not either, so I'm not going to challenge her.
Okay, so we have a motion by Mark, seconded by Colas. The motion to authorize finance director to sign a twelve-month contract standard power for the electrical supply. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, standing, motion passes. Now, the next one is the authorize the finance director to go out on the other three, which would gas, diesel, and oil. And I think what I heard Danielle say, that she needs to be able to make that decision within twenty-four hours.
I have no issue. I think we've done it before. Either, either one of them have done it. But, you know, they'll make the, the decision to purchase, buy, and come back to the board and let us know what we've gotten into.
Okay, that's a motion?
That's a motion.
I'll second that.
The motion to authorize finance director to negotiate rates with remaining commodities and sign the necessary paperwork to ensure that rates are secure for at least twelve months. You all understand that? Any more discussion on it? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, standing, motion passes.
Thank you. I'll report back on what we get for the rates.
Thank you. Did we, we did vote on the amendment, the ordinance for the bridges, right?
Yes, you did. Yes.
So now it looks like we're on new business?
Correct.
Do you have anything in the business?
I, I did not receive anything prior to the meeting. I didn't know if any board members had new business to discuss this evening.
Nothing.
Nothing.
All set.
So under old business, before you get to the action matrix, on tab seven B, we have the, so this evening you voted to accept and expend the Invest NH Demo Grant, but we also have the Invest NH Municipal Per Unit Grant for Bog Road. You have a matrix in your packet with the different projects. I do want to provide an update. DPW, this is the first project listed there, has sidewalk rehab in connection between West Union Pleasant Street Bog Road. It's approximately two thousand feet in length, and Adam provided me a budget estimate of one hundred, ten thousand dollars for that. And then the Goffstown Public Library would propose painting and changing out all carpet throughout the entire Goffstown Public Library at a cost of approximately fifty-two thousand dollars.
Five-two.
Five-two. And then immediately after, I guess, that projects that have been submitted, you have a letter from Dakota Partners back in August. I, I will point out that there is a revised estimate for funding gap on there. So... And I know that Jeremy is here this evening. I know the board members didn't get an opportunity necessarily to tour. Joanne and I did tour the property. Just to let you know, the town, let me just open up, the town will be, the town, the sewer commission, and the water precinct, the permit fees, impact fees, and off-site improvement fees totaled about one million dollars for those three entities. The town had an off-site improvement fees and our, and our impact fees. There's also the, the easement to bring sewer and water all the way through the project and bring it to Bog Road if both water or sewer ever want to expand in that area of town. And then there's also the conservation easement through the wetlands, and also the walking tap that will be maintained there. So those are some, I guess, some public improvements that the town could benefit from in the future. At this point, Dakota is really asking for any funds that the board sees fit. I don't know, again, if you want to allow Jeremy to speak to that, or they'll let him speak to that.
No, I think it's, I think we should let him speak, but I'm not really sure if I can make that decision. I need to study that, all that stuff that you just gave us. And I got a question on impact fees. Sewer and water, do they have a designated time that has to be used for that project?
Does sewer and water the easement? No, it's a, it's a permanent easement through the...
No, I'm talking, don't they, they pay impact fees to those two?
So they pay a, it's not an impact fee. It's called an accessibility fee for sewer, and that is stored in their escrow account, and they use that for future expansions. Or if there's also ever a major project over at the sewer, the sewer treatment facility in Manchester, we own a certain percentage of the improvements over there. So those fees are not like impact fees where there's a six-year limit. Those are different than impact fees. So they maintain those fees and use them when they need to expand or improve the services that there are.
Even if they don't have sewer, they still pay that fee?
Well, they, who doesn't have sewer?
If that project, do they have sewer up there?
They do. They do. Yes, absolutely. Yep. All the units are connected to sewer.
Okay.
And the sewer line runs on Washington.
Oh, okay, yeah.
Through the, it kind of goes back cross-country. They hit quite a bit of ledge through there.
Yeah, I know what you're talking about, yeah. Come on up.
Thank you. Oh, thank you, Select Board, for letting me speak, and thank you, Derek, for that explanation. That was fantastic. Jeremy from Dakota Partners. Jeremy Diarra from Dakota Partners. And I think you, you may remember me. I've been here a couple times now. But, you know, just wanted to come and ask for, at least, you know, we'll take anything we can get on it. This project is, you know, I've gone over that before. I won't bore you with the details, but ledge, among many other things, really financially strapped, we, we receive funding from a, a lot of different sources to help fill that gap, but we're still at about a two-point-five million dollar gap. So pretty substantial. We're, you know, just some sort of statistics I wanted to, to point out, although I'm sure everybody knows that there's a bit of a housing crisis out there right now. As twenty-twenty-three Hillsborough County vacancy rate for rental apartments was point six percent. Not six percent, point six percent. It's down from nearly four percent in twenty thirteen. Rents in our property range from five hundred to nine hundred for a one-bedroom, and eleven hundred to fourteen hundred for a two-bedroom on the affordable side. And even the market units, we have eleven market rate units there that are only eighteen hundred. In comparison, have the Falls Project, which is a lovely project, but market rate, those rents started eighteen hundred for a one-bedroom, to twenty-four hundred for a one-bedroom, and approximately three thousand for a two-bedroom. So we think we're bringing it, this project is really important for the community. In order to afford the Hadley Falls, or even just the Hillsborough County average rents, using a forty-to-one income ratio, you would need to make eighty thousand dollars to afford the median two-bedroom apartment, which is a huge amount of money for many, many people. Our project is, is aimed, the way it's structured, to be able that nobody will spend more than thirty percent of their income. You have to income qualify. Right now, we have about a hundred and twenty people for the sixty-three units on our waitlist. And we're going through that process of assigning them their units. So they're incredibly excited. We're incredibly excited, and we think we'll have our first occupants in by the end of October. We ask that you allocate those, these funds to this project so we can get that completed and get those folks in there. I thank you for your time.
Anybody got any questions? Now, wasn't there a, something that said that, that was based when they finished the project, or...?
So these are originally American Rescue Plan Act funds that were administered by the state. They were granted to the town, and we would be, there would be a sub-grantee. The requirement under ARPA is that all the construction and occupancy would have to be by December thirty-first, twenty twenty-four. So, you know, during the sidewalk, we talked about when they would all be occupied. It was my understanding they're looking in January.
Correct. My final units will be occupied in January.
January twenty-four.
Yeah.
So they would well meet that.
Is, is phase two started yet?
Yes. That, that is the part that's going to be done in around December, January, sort of, for occupants there. Phase one is, is well on its way. It should be wrapped up by November.
I'm trying to get to go on that walk.
And I'm happy to take anybody who wants to go. I'll work my, I'll work my schedule around your schedule and be happy to take you on a walk. It's a beautiful project. I'm really proud of it.
Colas?
Derek, I have one specific question. It's on page thirty-five. It's the first block at the top. There's an item for deferred developer fee, about three million dollars. What is that?
So deferred developer fee is, the way that financing is structured, we're required to only take a certain percentage of fee for this project. Actually, I think that the one you may be looking at is the original one. There was a slight typo there.
Yeah, it's on the, you're actually, on page thirty-six, has a deferred developer fee of a hundred, three thousand, four, thirty thousand.
Thank you.
So we, we originally were allowed... So we originally were allowed a fee on this of approximately $1 million. That's the way NIFA, they're giving you money, and you can only take a small percentage. So we don't have upside on the market rate. You know, if you're building a market rate unit, you get the upside of the rents going up. We don't. So we're capped at that $1 million. As part of our agreement with getting additional funds for the New Hampshire Housing and ARPA, we've agreed to defer most of that. I think we're right now at least 50% deferral. So for developing those two projects, the total fee to Dakota in development fee is $500,000 right now, and would be negative 1.9 million. Not great, not great economics.
Yeah, well, yeah, I was going to say, I don't know about that, how that works out.
Yeah, thank you, and I apologize. I didn't see the note. At the top of page 30, it said, six, it said it's updated numbers through September 8.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? I'm just unclear. I heard funding gap of 22,005, and then one, I read it was 4 million.
It was originally four. We've since gotten some, about $1 million from New Hampshire Housing, an additional $288,000, also from a credit allocation, we'll call it, also from New Hampshire Housing, and then $400,000 from ARPA. So the remaining gap on that project is 2.4.
2.4, thank you.
So on Phase 1, it's just, it's about 2.1, and then Phase 2, I've got it as just under $300,000. It did not print out in your packet.
Okay, thank you.
And just as a reminder, the total amount the town received was $10,000 for each of the affordable units. It was a total between the two phases of $630,000.
Now, the impact fees that the town collected was, how much, do you know?
I do have it. Let me just find it on my desktop.
Oh, that's okay, honey.
I think it was close to 300,000.
Yeah.
It was close to 300,000. The majority of that going to the school, because again, they have the largest one, but we have recreation, public safety, and roads.
And on top of that, there was a, I believe it was $181,000 to build a rotary on, I believe it was Washington Street.
It was for the improvements at Pleasant, Maine, at that location. So those funds were turned over, so we do have those.
And did you say there was $630,000 coming from New Hampshire Housing, the source of that money?
So the $630,000 that the town received is from the state of New Hampshire, from their Invest NH program. And those funds originally came from federal funds through their ARPA program.
Yep, thank you.
And it was $10,000 a unit for the 63 units. Derek, what steps do you want us to take now, Derek?
Well, you have, you have projects now from the departments, and they're starting to get a little bit more concrete with the actual amounts that they would cost. You have requests from the developers, so you can move forward, you can keep this on your action matrix, or discuss this at a future meeting, but I think for the benefit of Dakota Partners and the work that they're doing there, I think they would like a decision pretty soon, as they're trying to finish up that project, and then the department's going to get started. So really, there's no, the money doesn't lapse unless we, the money doesn't lapse because the project will be done. So it's really up to the Board now on how you want to spend those funds.
I can understand their point, but I thought we had asked that Department has to have something concrete by September 1st.
You did, and you have a list, for the most part, of all the, all the amounts that they have for budget estimates now.
Okay. So may I suggest that we get that passed on to us?
We got it.
I mean, we have to, we have to work for this, and then, and say, make a commitment for the first meeting in October?
Okay.
That'd be, I think that's fair, gets everybody a chance to talk.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you. I'd like Kelly to be here too on that, so.
Okay, yeah. I'll put that on the agenda under old business on October.
There's nothing on police station, right?
No.
Bridge, nothing much going on there?
The actual, the ad hoc committee will be reviewing their final report at the next meeting and delivering that to the Select Board.
We just talked about the walkthrough, how'd that go?
Very good. We've got a little bit of, some additional work to do to improve the grant application, specifically a cyclical maintenance plan for the building. We didn't have a formal one, so they wanted to see that, so.
Didn't see Roger there painting anything in it. And, well, we do have one vehicle that's temporarily out of service, is it?
Yes, yeah.
Did we all saw the email on that today?
Engine 2 is temporarily out of service now.
But that could go back into service pretty quick.
Yes, definitely.
Okay, anything else?
I don't have anything else.
Motion?
You have one other public comment.
Right. Is there anybody here for public comment? Seeing none, we'll move on. Mark?
I'll take a motion to go in public session RSA 91A:32A, compensation, B hiring, E consideration of pending claims or litigation, which has been threatened and running.
Second. Motion by Mark, seconded by Jim on the roll call.
Yes, sir.
Yes. Yes. That'll conclude our public portion of our September 11 meeting. Again, let's not forget what, September 11, 2001? What, 21?
One.
2001, right, 21, 2001, man. Thank you.